We're live.
All right, great. I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting for June 10th, 2021 to order. I'd like to ask for an adoption of the agenda. We want to add an item zoning review by law update to item nine C. So if someone can make that motion amending the agenda to include that, do that for me, please. Counselor Charlotte seconded by Counselor Rindt. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. And I want to adopt the minutes of April 15th, the Committee of the Whole Minutes, April 15th, 2021. Someone want to make that motion? Counselor Charlotte seconded by Counselor Rindt. All in favor? Motion's carried. Any business arising from those minutes? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to announcements from the mayor. I want to give my compliments on behalf of city staff and council to our bylaw enforcement officer Jeremy Alt. Jeremy did a course called prosecute this and received top marks, did extremely well on it. So I just want to say kudos, Jeremy. Thank you for what you're doing. We appreciate everything. Thanks again. Okay, we're going to move on to delegations and presentations. The first one is BC Transit, our future service plan. So I think Seth is here. So we want to go forward with that, please.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. Really appreciate their opportunity to speak to you today. My colleague Aaron Sparks, our transit planner for Rebelstoke, will bring up a PowerPoint in a moment or two, and I will speak to the first few slides, and then I will pass it to them to speak to the update on what we found out through the last couple of months of engaging with the good people of Rebelstoke.
Awesome. Thank you.
So thanks again so much for the opportunity to speak today. Let's skip to the next slide. So fundamentally, we wanted to come and talk to you about what we heard from the Transit Future Service Plan engagement or consultation. We have a, we have a great platform that we use online website and allows for all sorts of interactivity. So, so we're really happy with that. And we got a good response from, from the community. So we're, we're looking forward to sharing what we heard there. I'm going to speak before we dive into that. I'll speak a little bit about BC Transit overview, about our partnership and shared services model. And I have a slide or two about ridership and performance before, as I said, I'll hand it off to Aaron Sparks to talk about the Transit Future Service Plan engagement and, and next steps. And so this slide is about roles and responsibilities. And I believe this slide package was in your agenda package, so I won't enumerate and identify everything on the list. But suffice it to say that BC Transit provides the expertise and experts across a variety of subject matter areas to provide and administer a robust and efficient transit system. The local government is responsible for setting service levels, routing, administering bus stops, and that sort of local expertise and on the road sort of understanding. And the local operating company is responsible through contract with BC Transit for delivering that service specified by BC Transit. I'll go to the next slide. And so the shared services model is fairly unique in the jurisdiction of British Columbia. I think that I've been told that New Jersey is the only other jurisdiction in North America that has a sort of provincial or state level authority for transit. Usually it is just a municipal, municipal cost and a municipal endeavor. In most cities in North America, that's the case. And BC Transit's model really benefits from a very generous dollars from, from the provincial level, which is just great. And so, and it ranges on the custom where there's both a conventional and custom system. In Rebelstoke, we have a blended system. So it's just over 50% is paid for by the province and the remainder is paid for by local government share. And then the local government share is further reduced because of 100% of fare revenue and ticket revenue offsets that, that local share, which is less than 50%. Next slide. And here I have a system performance slide. We do these annual reports, and this one is, I apologize, a little outdated. We don't have the 2021 performance slide yet, although that will probably not look anywhere very rosy because, because of the pandemic, it impacted our fiscal year, which starts April 1st and runs till March. It impacted our fiscal year quite, quite squarely. The cost of the Rebelstoke Transit System is about $650,000. There's figures about local investment in return and, and also performance. And on the performance front, I would say that the system operates not as effectively or as efficiently as what we'd like to see. And we hope that the Transit Future Service Plan can be sort of roadmap to developing a more robust and efficient system that will provide better ridership metrics over the coming years. We do consider, when we look at the Rebelstoke system, that there's great opportunities to, to enhance it and provide better value for riders and, and entice more people to, to take transit, choose transit. Next slide. I wanted to show a bit of month over month ridership. So we have going back to, from April 2019, and we see that there's a bit of a summer jump. So I guess the summer tourists increased our ridership a little bit to over 2,000 rides per month. And then when we hit March 2020, and the provincial health officer told us to avoid non-essential travel, our ridership dropped between 75 and 80% across the province. And indeed, as you can see here in the Rebelstoke system, it might have been a little bit less than that threshold. We've seen, we saw a little more resilience in, in smaller communities where there's a lot of folks that rely upon transit to get their groceries and meet their essential needs. And so I think we see, we see a little bit of that trend. But more significantly, since, since that March precipitous drop, we've seen a fairly steady incremental increase with a little bit of dip and weave as, as the, we've had different direction from the provincial health officer about how we should behave and, and interact and, and deliver our lives. But we're starting to see some, some growth and excited about the growth we'll see in the coming months and certainly into the fall when, when that fourth phase of the reopening, provincial reopening plan, as we enter that, and we will, we hope to see continued ridership growth and really over the next year to return to pre-COVID ridership levels. Next slide. And with that, I'm going to pass it off to my colleague Aaron Sparks to introduce the transit system in the slide and then speak to the, to the engagement outcomes from, from that work.
Great. Thank you, Seth. I'm going to keep my camera off. I'm having a bit of connection difficulty. But I assure you that I am here and I am more than just a little circle on the, on the screen would suggest. So my name is Aaron Sparks, and I am the transit planner for the Rebelstoke Transit System, working for BC Transit. So this slide is just an overview of the existing system. So you can see there are four routes operating currently, and there are four buses delivering that service. This service is delivered in Rebelstoke by Rebelstoke connections. And something that I want to just note sort of off the bat is that all of the routes have different service levels. So the Route 1, for example, operates almost hourly, whereas the Route 4 commuter operates just once a day during the morning. So the purpose of the Transit Future Service Plan is to review the transit system in Rebelstoke, identifying service and infrastructure priorities for the next one to five years and beyond. This builds off of a service review that started back in 2017, confirming support for those 2017 proposals, as well as introducing some additional ones. The Transit Future Service Plan started in 2020. We met with our key stakeholder group to launch the project. We were all set to go out to engagement, but then obviously, it was March of 2020, so everything was put on hold. So after those delays, we ended up carrying out our online engagement from January 8th to February 18th of 2021. Based on the results of engagement, we will put together the draft Transit Future Service Plan. And then once that document is approved by council, these proposals will be integrated into the service planning process. So we received 482 responses in total. The majority of these were through our online survey, but we did distribute some paper surveys as well. So I think we had about 15 to 20 paper surveys returned to us. So there was some strong performance in terms of the number of responses compared to other similar sized communities in BC for similar transit review projects. Most of the respondents are not current transit users. So about 60% of our respondents don't currently take transit. 22% of respondents do use transit a few times a year. So we did still get some, some feedback from current riders. And I do want to note here that it's, it's obviously very important to survey transit riders, but it's also very important to see what non-transit riders are feeling, just because it can help us develop an understanding of what we could do differently to get more people on the bus. Age-wise, we had good representation across all groups, particularly those age 60 plus. So we had 21% of our respondents in that age category, which actually matches the census data for Rebelstoke. So something good to highlight. In terms of support for proposals, the vast majority of the proposals received close to or higher than 80% support. We, like I said, we had a higher response rate from non-transit users, but that suggests we could capture some insights on latent demand. And the one final thing I want to highlight here is that the route proposals included a note about the possible relocation of the transit hub from its existing location at Grizzly Plaza to the community center at some point in the future. And I just want to note, the proposals can be accomplished with the transit hub at its existing location. So this is not a central part of the plan. It's more of an ongoing conversation that we can continue having as we move into the future. Ultimately, the goal with the transit hub is just to make sure that it's future-proofed and that we have space to accommodate a heavy-duty bus for the potential Rebelstoke Mountain Resort service. In terms of what we heard, there were a few key themes that came out of some questions that we asked on the survey. We asked, why don't you currently take transit? And then, other than improvements to ease COVID concerns, what changes could we make to get you to use transit? The responses that we received to these two questions can be categorized into a few themes. So for example, why don't you currently take transit? The schedule doesn't work for my needs. I use active transportation, so I walk or I take my bike, or service just isn't available in my area. And then for changes that we could make, we mostly saw requests for a later or earlier service, more frequent service, or more direct service. And so I'm going to quickly just run through a couple of the key proposals. These aren't all of the proposals. These are just ones we wanted to highlight. And at the bottom of each slide, we've noted how these proposals address the themes that came out through engagement. So first up, we have two short-term priorities, adding service in the evening and then adding service on Sundays. So we had about 85% of respondents supporting evening service and just under 70% respondents supporting Sunday service. And one medium-term proposal we had put forward for engagement was to combine the existing service currently provided by Everything Rebelstoke with a new service provided by BC Transit and the city. So this would offer the same level of service as the resort shuttle potentially providing year-round service. And we saw about 81% of respondents supporting this proposal. Another medium-term proposal, so this would be to modify Route 1 South Side. So this would actually see us separate Route 1 South Side into one route and then create a new route, which I'll talk about in just a second. This proposal would increase the area of coverage on Route 1 South Side, as well as provide more direct service, just because we wouldn't be going into Arrow Heights on this route. So this receives support from just under 80% of our respondents. The sort of sister proposal would be to provide a new route in Arrow Heights, running between Arrow Heights and downtown, providing greater coverage than the current Route 1 routing does, as well as providing more direct access through downtown, because you're not kind of doing as many deviations as the current Route 1 does. This would also provide peak access to a few schools. And this received 86% support from our respondents. And then finally, so kind of as expected, we need to make a couple of modifications to the proposals based off of the feedback that we received. We need to make some minor adjustments to the routing on the Arrow Heights route, just because it was developed before the roundabout was, was finished. And so it doesn't reflect the fact that there's a roundabout there. So we just need to make some minor modifications to the routing. So the bus isn't driving over the roundabout or down a one-way street. We will also be refining that evening service then, based off of the feedback we received. So the most supported option was extending service till 10:00 PM. So we'll, we'll likely be making that recommendation in the, in the, the final plan. And then finally, Sunday's service, this was proposed as a short-term priority, and it did receive about 70% support from our respondents. So we do recommend keeping it in, in the plan, but we would just be suggesting that it perhaps be implemented after some of the other short-term priorities, just because how it ranked sort of relative to the other proposals, it maybe doesn't make sense to, to do right away. Though we do suspect it probably can be done with the existing fleets, though it's a relatively low-hanging fruit proposal, just in terms of resources. And then finally, in terms of next steps, we will be developing a draft Transit Future Service Plan this summer. This will involve reviewing the system performance, developing the proposed phasing for our different proposals, and identifying any high-level resource requirements. So that would be our hours and our buses. We will be circulating the draft to our project working group, making any revisions as appropriate, and then proceeding to council in the fall for endorsement. After the document has been endorsed, the proposals within will inform our transit improvement process, which is just our expansion process. So how we, how we add hours and buses to transit systems. And then the last point I just want to note is that, of course, we always try and make sure that our planning documents are in alignment with any of our local government partners' planning documents. So we will ensure that this aligns with and supports the city's transportation master plan. And that, that is that. So thank you so much.
Great. Thanks, Erin. Seth, either one of you, I'm going to ask if council has any questions at this present time. Counselors, any comments or questions that you'd like to pose? Seeing none, I'm going to, oh, Counselor Palmer, you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor Souls. Yeah, just probably more comments rather than questions. The, so thank you very much for the presentation. It's, I think, one that the community over the years has seen various sort of similar things, little, little tweaks trying to improve service. The, the whole idea of the survey, bringing information, and I think it's, it's pretty typical. They're saying, okay, well, if there was better service, we would use the bus a bit more. There ends up being that contradiction of how do you create more service within, in cost effectively. And the biggest problem that I see with our transit service today is, and it has been this way, is that it, it defies sort of logic as far as the economics and it, and the, on the, the environment aspects of that. So it doesn't, doesn't meet the social requirements of, of the riders. And this will help possibly a little bit with the little tweaks. Economically, we're, I believe, in excess of $20 each way. So $40 on a round trip for, or in excess of that. Plus, we have basically an empty bus syndrome. That's, I think that's why we didn't impact it from the COVID. That significantly is because there wasn't very many riders to stop riding on the bus. I, I believe, and I don't see that we're going to be doing, doing that in the remainder of the term of this council. But I, I think we could be providing a much better service, much more cost-effectively by really relooking at how we're providing that service. We've had that dialogue before. So I'm just reiterating stuff I said before. I guess one question I do have is on the ski bus, and maybe you mentioned it. So with the, the bus that goes up to the ski hill, is there any integration that's going to be done with this, with the ski bus, or is that totally separate?
Any comments, Erin or Seth?
Thank you, your worship, to the Counselor Palmer. We are actually looking at that aspect as, as we speak. We have been meeting with the operator of the, the mountain shuttle and in coordination with BC Transit to consider how to achieve that goal that you just stated. As part of that goal, we are currently looking at some options on paper, which again, we need to move prudently so that we do not reduce the ridership that we have. However, we do see the true benefit of integrating the two systems. And again, through the transportation master planning work, I know I continually refer to, give me a chance to get the, the master planning out of the way so that we can present to you something that's comprehensive, that talks to the pedestrian network, to the ski bus, to their local transit, to the bike routes, to racks on the buses and things like that, so that we can truly integrate all forms of non-vehicle traffic or travel into a seamless mode for the community and grow the system organically for the long term. And so, long, long-witted answer to, we are looking at this very hard, and we are going to be bringing forth some options for council to consider near the end of the transportation master planning work for the community and council's consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Any follow-up with that, Counselor Palmer?
I think that's good for now. And I certainly look forward to the master transportation plan and work. There's, staff are doing a lot of master plans. So I, I certainly appreciate that there's a lot of balls up in the air there. So look forward to that. But thank you very much. And thank you for the presentation as well.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Just in regards to the, the implementation of the strategy or some of the stuff that's presented from the transit, are we premature? Should the, should the master transportation plan be forefront? Should it be, should that dictate how we react on our transit plan?
Mr. Black?
To your worship, to Counselor Elliott. I believe we are moving in a very cautious and prudent way by making minor tweaks to the existing BC Transit system while we're undertaking these studies and the concept of integrating the ski shuttle with BC Transit. Unfortunately, we just do not have an integration plan that works seamlessly with the two, two systems. And so that is real, the real core of the work and how we fund both systems. One is a provincial cost-sharing, one is the mountain and RMI funding. I'm not certain that we actually have the provincial legislation in place that we can simply just say, we're going to do this all in one seamless way. And so from a mechanic's point of view, that I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done behind the scenes in order to make the big picture work. So I think we are being prudent here. We're not increasing the budget significantly and still making minor changes to improve the system as we can in the short term with the vision of the long-term goals that the community has identified through this survey process.
Any follow-up, Counselor?
Yes, I mean, the, the transit problem has been on the radar for quite some time. I mean, my time at the resort, that was seven or eight years ago. It was a question mark then, the viability of, of the transit service, and the ridership, or the lack of it. And we're trying to get a handle on it continuously. I mean, it drives, drives me crazy to watch that bus go around empty all the time. And, you know, I, I don't know what the answer is, but it seems reckless to keep throwing money at it, at an unused service. I know the province contributes quite significantly, but I just wonder whether there's a, a better solution at this point. I mean, you can do it on-call, or, I mean, if the ridership that's in place right now are, the people are in desperate need of it, that maybe an on-call service is a better option at this time until we get to our master overall plan laid out, and then we can build a comprehensive structure then.
Any comment, Mr. Black?
I have, I have no comment. I can't disagree with anything that has been said. As, as stated, I think we have an opportunity here to continue to make the system better. And it takes unfortunately time for these sorts of things to become more and more cost-effective. I think in a big-picture scheme, the operation of the system is generally consistent with small municipalities throughout the province. We are not out of line as far as the cost per ride, but it is expensive. So we have to take some time here to make it better. And we've got to plan this properly.
Okay. Seth, you had your hand up. Do you want to say anything before I go on to Counselor Palmer?
Yeah, sure. I just wanted to add that there is some work at BC Transit to look at digital on-demand. So right now, we have some on-request service in some of our systems across the province where someone can call dispatch at least 24 hours in advance and book a ride for the, for the following day or for a couple of days out. That is what we call analog on, on-demand or on-request service. And we are moving to explore digital on-demand, which is sort of like Uber, in that you can have an app on your phone, and you can say, I'm waiting here, looking for a bus. And it provides a little more curb-to-curb service rather than fixed route service. And this is, we're right now starting a feasibility study in two communities, the city of Kelowna and the city of Cranbrook, so just south of you. And we'll be having a consultant do a fairly robust report, looking at the financial numbers and what's effective with the digital on-demand and what we need to keep in mind if we're to pursue it in the BC Transit provincial cost-sharing model. So, so I would say there is the possibility, we're still probably about two years out from implementation in other communities, but, but we're working away at, at exploring that and seeing how it might work. And especially in a circumstance such as Rebelstoke, where we have a relatively low ridership on a fixed route system and, and how it might supplement or, or be an alternative approach to, to provide that service.
Great. Thank you for that comment. Counselor Palmer?
Thank you, Mayor Souls. Yeah, just further to Counselor Elliott's comments and Mr. Black's. You know, we need to get that master transportation plan done. I think that's a crucial part in then moving ahead. This is a tweak that we'll likely be proceeding with. I'm encouraged with Mr. Wright's comments there. I would have loved it if Rebelstoke had been the, the leader rather than Cranbrook or Kelowna, because I think it would have been a really easy, I think we have an easy community to go to that Uber style of service. And I think we could do wonderful things with that. And I would like to see that movement towards that. It will take leadership from council. So as was outlined in the report on roles and responsibility, BC Transit is doing what they're supposed to do. Local government is establishing, determining those service priorities, how we go about doing those kind of things, the, the transit vision. And if we could get to that thing where, where instead of having, you know, that online application, everybody has their phones and, you know, doing that, and also making sure that we provide a better service for those that need it. And I, I just see that, that, I think we, we are an extremely easy, I'm not saying it's an easy project, but that is something we can, that we could, as a community, have incredibly a successful model by changing on how we're doing it and get away from the, this, you know, these large buses going around with one or two people on them, or often nobody on the buses. So I, I look forward to the master transportation plan. I know I'm sort of saying the same thing over and over again. But I, I think the real message with Mr. Wright, what he's saying there, and that is that really, it's going to take council in the community to be approaching BC Transit and say, look, we, we really want to move, move ahead. But that is a little ways away, because we do have the master transportation plan. We'll be into an election. So it might be something for a future council. Thank you, Mayor Souls.
Thank you. Counselor Charlotte?
Thank you, worship. And Counselor Palmer brings up a good point. Timeline-wise, everything moves slow and steady. But I am grateful to hear this report, but also but also the comments about the pilot projects in Kelowna and Cranbrook. I think there's a lot of possibilities there and if we're about two years out, that would probably bring in some nice timing. The next council will have all the master plans in place, or most of them, if not all of them. And hopefully, they'll be in the position to implement something exciting. I'm wondering if there's anything in particular, and maybe this isn't for right now, but in the future, is there anything in particular that we can do to make sure that the future council is set up and the community is set up to be able to implement any of these on-demand or other services? If there's like, what needs to be true for that to be possible?
Any comment, Mr. Wright?
Sorry, pardon me, unmute myself. Yeah, through the, through your worship, I would say at this point, there's nothing that council needs to consider. We will continue to have these conversations with staff about what steps the city might want to take to ensure that it is prepared and we're working in lockstep with the master planning work that the city is undertaking and will continue to work in that vein and bring presentations to council when the time is right to move forward with that consideration.
Great. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Councilor Elliott?
Yes, your worship. Just Seth, I was wondering, is there, are there any communities that offer free bus or transit services in British Columbia?
Sure, there are a small handful of very particular instances of systems that provide a little bit of free service, not much in the province of B C. And but there, I think it's the Squamish system that provides service on weekends for free. And off the top of my head, I can't speak to any others. Certainly, certainly there were some calls for free transit and we are working right now with the province about free transit for kids under 12 or kids 12 and under. So, there is some work happening in that vein, but there's not too much in the realm of altogether free transit for the entire system in B C.
No, I just, I just think there's real, I mean, the school buses are one thing. The B C, the resort shuttle, B C Transit are all applying to our roadways. We've got a lot of traffic that we could lessen with increased usership on the transit system. I think there's a lot of savings that could be done and it could solve some parking issues as well with the transportation system that was functional and well-used. I know if we're creating an argument for free transit, there's lots of ways you could counter the cost of that endeavor. So, you know, you could say less road repair, less road maintenance, less road plowing, all those things that could come into the picture if we created an argument for free transit. Just I wonder if that's something that should be part of your planning process, developing a model where that would be a part of it, or if that's something, a direction you need from council.
Any comment, Mr. Wright?
Sure, through the chair, I think that on the, in terms of our fair review process, usually this process that my colleague Aaron Sparks spoke to today is a planning process and it's sort of what our planning team puts together in evaluation. We also have a fair and revenue department here, which is only two or three people and they do fair reviews for systems across the province. They've put that work on fair reviews on hold for the time being because the province of B C gave out the safe restart funds, which was some money to compensate for lost revenue and additional cleaning costs and personal protective equipment for COVID. And the province put a stipulation that service levels and fares are not substantially changed for the next three fiscal years. And so, for three fiscal years, we've put our fair and revenue people on some other work while we have that requirement not to really entertain significant fare changes. So, when in around 23, 24, we'd be starting back with fair reviews and we could certainly add Rebelstoke to the list for interest in a fair review and they could present some options for reduced fares. One thing that I would note here is we tend to be an advocate of more creative fare strategies rather than eliminating fares altogether to maintain agility and be able to respond to changes in your ridership and changes in the demand. And so, one example that comes to mind is in Kamloops, the city has a low fare, or sorry, low wage or unemployed pass that is coupled with their low-income recreation pass. So, if you're low-income and if you're something like under $30,000 in the last tax year on your taxes, you can apply for a low-income transit pass, that's something like 50 bucks a year and it gives you access to the rec centers to go swimming and also access to ride the buses. And that's sort of the type of strategy we tend to support and prefer for a variety of reasons. And we, I could pull out an old fair review that was sort of outlined some of that rationale and forward at G F U, you'd be curious about that.
Well, I just think in that case, you're creating a stigma with riding transit and that's a delicate situation you want to get in. Maybe if you wanted to make it appealing to everybody, you'd just open it to everybody. So, but that's just my take. Sorry.
Okay. All right. Councilor Palmer?
Thank you, Mayor Souls, and thank you for indulging the conversation because I think a lot of this is future stuff. But I concur with Councilor Elliott on the idea of free transit for our local population. And I think that model could work in Rebelstoke because we're in a unique situation. So, if there was a pass for residents, permanent residents in Rebelstoke, and I'm talking about the time in the future when we have our on-demand system and I'm going to be speaking positively when we have our on-demand system, that that be the time for the fair review. I would envision that it's free for residents, permanent residents, and then a higher fee for the tourists coming to our community because they can afford that. And that's the kind of model that I think we could have much better cost recovery. Also, I think with the on-demand system, of course, then we'd have much higher ridership. But I concur with Councilor Elliott that one way to get ridership up is for our residents is make the system work first and then provide it free for the residents. We're the ones that are subsidizing this after all. Thanks, Mayor Souls.
Great. Thank you. Any further comments, Mr. Wright, regarding your presentation? Or Aaron, would you like to say anything one last time before we conclude?
No, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and really appreciate that council has a desire to see a robust, meaningful and effective transit system and hopefully, we can work together on that goal and really prove that to improve the transit system over the coming years.
Great. Thank you. Thank you both. Thanks, Aaron. Thanks, Seth. Appreciate you being here. Thanks for your presentation. All right. We're going to move on, council. We're moving on to number nine, staff reports, 9A Development Service Building Bylaw Presentation. Ms. Wade, you have a presentation for us.
Thank you, your worship. I also would like council to know that our senior building inspector Gary Sears also at the meeting today too. Welcome, Gary. Thank you. And I will share my screen with you now. Great. Can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. So, we're really pleased to be before the committee today in regards to giving you the update on the building bylaw review. This is one of the first major bill bylaw updates that is on our workload for this department. And we're fast getting out of the gate on this one. So, today we wanted to just give you a quick summary of the issues where we're at, following up from our March 11th committee of the whole meeting and give you an update on that, just a little bit of background and discussion and next steps. So, today we are presenting, to your report was attached a draft building bylaw. That draft building bylaw has included the comments that we received from the industry from our April 28th and May 28th meetings. You'll note in the report that we've made comments, that we've engaged with the industry, got their comments. And at our May 28th building monthly meeting, we provided them feedback and those comments have been incorporated into the building bylaw. There was relatively few of them and we will go through those with you. And we'll just quickly outline the summary of engagement with the industry and just want you to note that we do have this up on Talk Rebelstoke. Just to refresh your memory in regards to where we're at with this, this was a model building bylaw that we have utilized. It has been developed through the insurance, Lidstone, the Building Professional Association, and we had to use the medium-sized building bylaw. We have incorporated in the energy step code to bring us into conformance with our climate action goals and the provincial climate action goals. And this is to have step code three for part nine buildings and step code two for complex buildings incorporated into the bylaw so it'll be effective as of January 2022. As I just alluded to, we did have industry engagement. We have been talking to the industry about this. We've had several workshops in the past. The builder development community is very supportive over what we proposed. We basically had six comments that we received. We have responded to those already at our May monthly meeting. The key, two key things they wanted clarification on was when a structural engineer is required and also the effective date of the step code on building permit applications, which would mean that once the bylaw is adopted, it would be effective as of January 2022. And any applications that are submitted prior to that date would be under the old requirements in our bylaw for building performance. And really, the main changes that were amended into our bylaw was that we didn't have anything to do with swimming pools, so we put those regulations in and we have increased the reduction in building permit fees from 5% to 10%, which is in line with best practices. And basically, we put in a six-month restriction on open building permits so that we can encourage people to move forward with their building permits or they'll be closed. So, we don't, we have clear timelines on that, which we did not have in our previous bylaw. So, as I've noted, we have posted this on Talk Rebelstoke, so it's available there. And from today's meeting, staff is going to prepare the first three readings to bring back to council, hopefully in July. And there is no required public hearing for this, so it'll be the first three readings for council consideration. And that's it.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Wade. Any comments, questions from council? Councilor Palmer?
Thank you, Mayor Souls. I have a few questions and comments. So, the bylaw repeals bylaw of 1707, the proposed bylaw. That also includes a number of amendments. Do those amendments need to be repealed as well? Are they automatically repealed with 1707 being repealed?
I understand it is they're all repealed with the repeal for all of those.
And then on page, this was just one, so on page 22 of the bylaw, there was some reference to, just let me get there. On page 22, there's reference to columns on municipal ticketing information. I just didn't have a chance to go take a look. Are those columns referring to our bylaws? Are those, there's columns one, two, and three? Or is that to a different, to something else? I was just a little bit confused on the columns regarding ticketing.
Through your worship to Councilor Palmer, this is in regards to the municipal ticket information system bylaw. And so, it's in reference to that bylaw. And I believe Ms. Floyd might be able to jump in on this as well because any changes we make in regards to enforcement will have to be done within that municipal ticketing information bylaw.
And then, just maybe one associated question of Mayor Souls is, will there need to be an amendment to our municipal ticketing bylaw at the same time?
Your worship, yes, Councilor Palmer, we will definitely have to amend the MTI bylaw as well so that they match.
Okay. Yeah, so that's good. It'd be interesting to know, I think, what those rates would be like, but I guess that will be coming later on to get a sense of what those are. Now, I have a question on 10, section 1057 and on, so temporary buildings. So, in this, in this bylaw, there's reference, it's pretty explicit as to a temporary building. And I just want to make sure I understand, and this is related to 606 Victoria, so it's just an understanding. I think some of those things might be addressed in this. So, it's talking about temporary buildings, but and I believe it's defined within the body here. Yeah, so 1057A, so it's a period, a permit for a period not exceeding one year. So, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. So, if someone's applying under the building bylaw, under this new bylaw, for a temporary building, it would only be effective for one year. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Through your worship to Councilor Palmer, it has got a period for one year. And then, then under 1B, it goes into a little more description about compliance with zoning bylaw and the building code, et cetera. And our current building bylaw does not address this. So, with this new template, this has been brought in. And I don't know if Mr. Sears wants to add anything to that comment, but that's basically the gist of this.
Mr. Sears?
Yes, through your worship, this line to Mr. Palmer, this line was basically for temporary buildings, not necessarily like we are seeing on Victoria. Victoria, they do have a, I believe, a temporary development permit, but this line here, 1057, is more for temporary building. For example, if they need a building for construction for the use of the employees. So, it's not related to the main use of the building for this line. So, it's mostly for buildings that will not stay there permanently that are only for temporary use, either while doing its construction or for a specific short period.
Okay, interesting. I'll have to ponder that a little bit more. I was hoping that it would actually apply to all temporary buildings and I think there's a little bit of, I'm confused at least on, because we have temporary use permits. Now, in this new bylaw, a type of temporary building that's exceeding one year and then we have these other temporary buildings that I'm confused about. But anyway, I think that answers my question for now. So, for a building like 606 Victoria, this bylaw would not apply to that building is the way you're understanding that. Okay.
Any follow-up? Mr. Palmer?
Oh, yes. Okay. Yeah. So, the next, just a comment on public hearings. So, saying we're not required public hearing and I think it's probably a fairly, probably a minor point. I think the bylaw is good. I think it's really great that we're getting this updated. I think there's a number of things in there that are going to be helpful. At the same time, I just, on the principles of democracy and the idea of the public hearing, trading that opportunity, it seems to me that it would be better trading that opportunity, it seems to me that, that it would be better if we did have a pu, public hearing. There might not be anybody show up, but uh, and, and there is some like, uh, I, I, I know we're saying it's a regulatory bylaw. I'm not sure what kind of bylaw isn't regulatory, but it, it does include fees. It includes and uh, things about enforcement. Um, so that's just a comment, whether, you know, whether that's, I, I would prefer that there was a public hearing, I guess is the bottom line. So that's just a comment. We can look at that later on. Then going on, uh, Mayor Souls, if I may, uh, just on into definitions. Value of work definitions, and that's at the, at the very end. The uh, yeah, so value, value of work means the amount that is calculated as followed. It says stuff. And then it says declared value of work. So the way I'm reading that definition is, the definition of value of work is value of work. And uh, a- again, it's a related uh, well, it's just on this idea, who's, who's determining that value of work? And there seems to be a bit of ambu, ambiguity in the, in that definition. So it might be something staff might want to look at, uh, because I think we're learning just the importance of definitions. And so that was one that I just, I caught. So uh, in, uh, under value of work, AI, um, unless there's something that's obvious that I'm missing there.
Through, through your worship.
Go ahead.
Yes, through your worship to Council Palmer. Yes, if you uh, read through the um, definition, it says declared value of work or the value calculated as per valuation schedule and fees and charges bylaw, which we do have in ours. And the other one is a method approved by the building officer. Or, and then they go on to tell, and one of them is the Marshall Valuation Service. This is something that we just purchased in the last two years so that we could, we would have a uh, industry standard to evaluate um, construction. And we put those value, we updated those in the fees and charges bylaw. And we were looking to do that again this year. But with the um, the fees and charges bylaw was defeated. So we didn't get to do that any further. So that, we have sorted through that and there is a method and we do use it in the department. So I just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and to the planner, through this mayor. Uh, so just, I, to me on that, there's still, because there's the I, 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 the triple I. And it, and I'll just leave this with, with staff to take a look at it because it seems to me that the AIs and BI is uh, creating ambiguity and it seems to me that should be struck out. But I'll let you take a look at that and see if, uh, if, if you're following the logic there. The, the last item, I believe, was ten, under ten fifty five on occupancy. So some, sometimes there is uh, I, I, maybe it's just a clarification from the building inspector. On occupancy, is that different than say temporary occupancy? There doesn't seem to be, like, sometimes there's, m- maybe it's different today, but that, that you get a temporary occupancy based on getting some additional before you get your full occupancy. I think there is a, a house up in Monashie that would fall under something like that. Is it, I just, I was just wondering if there's any sort of comment about the occupancy uh, of, of buildings?
Mr. Seer.
Yes, through your worship, um, yeah, we're, we're, we're kind of in a transition with occupancy. Uh, in the past, uh, there were uh, temporary or conditional occupancy given out. And the issue is with that mainly is when a conditional occupancy is granted, people move into their house, they have no incentive of fixing whatever condition they have. They have no incentive for closing out their building permit. So that's why uh, we, we, we still have a lot of open building permit that were never closed because people move into their house and it's not a priority for them to close their permit or they don't even think about it. So this is something we're, we're trying to address now and, and avoid for the future to leave all those open building permit. That being said, uh, when we do an occupancy inspection, sometimes there are some minor deficiencies uh, that are, still have to be issued to uh, complete their, their building permit and get their final. And we, we fully understand the situation of Rebel Stoke with, with, with the housing and, and the issues. And sometimes people have to go somewhere. So when, when most of the safety conditions are, are met and there are some little minor things that, that have to be finished in order to close that building permit, we do grant what we call conditional occupancy permit. So that gives uh, the applicant uh, the choice of moving into their house, to occupy their house, while they still have some minor deficiencies to address before closing their permit. So we, we still do that. Yes.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Matusi, you have your hand up.
Uh, thank you, worship. Just going back to Counselor Palmer's earlier point uh, on the um, public hearing. And you know, I think the, you know, the fact is council could hear from anyone who wishes to on anything. It's, it's almost semantics. Uh, there, there's no regu, there's no requirement. Unlike rezoning, there's a requirement for a public hearing. A DP, there isn't, right? The input sought, but there's no public hearing. Uh, but because there is a formal statutory public hearing, um, certainly council, if it wished, uh, the, when it's considering this bylaw, uh, could it be made known that in fact council, you know, will uh, hear from the public, should there be anything uh, that comes forward? Uh, it, it's not common, but it's cer, I've certainly seen situations where councils have felt that, that they want that extra input. But again, it's, you know, um, Ms. Wade's correct. There's no statutory requirement for this kind of bylaw uh, to have a formal public hearing. But that doesn't stop council from hearing from the public, uh, should it wish.
Great. Thank you. This way, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, just to your worship, um, just to follow up on Mr. Matusi's comments. The other thing we have done to engage the community is we did put it up on Talk Rebel Stoke. There is opportunity for us to gather those comments and we can bring that back to council with uh, the report for the first and second and third readings so that you can see the comments that are being made by the public. We're, we're happy to do that.
Follow up, Counselor Palmer?
Um, uh, thank you, Mayor Souls, and uh, thank you to staff. I, I, I think that's the main thing is just making sure that there is this opportunity of voice from the public and I'm satisfied uh, with that, that there is a summary or the, the summary or in the real comments that are coming from the public so that we can see what those concerns are and consider them. So super appreciated. Um, and yeah, thank you very much, uh, for indulging me.
Great. Counsel Elliot, follow up question?
Oh, not, not quite into the details that uh, Tim tends to go into. I'm not, it's, it put me to sleep on some of this stuff. Sorry. But uh, I just have a question on uh, the step code. Uh, step code three is a direction I, I guess we're, we're, we're shooting for. Uh, the bylaw uh, incorporate that, I, I, I believe. But um, eventually we're going to go to step code five. And um, is there a time or when do you anticipate implementing the, the bylaws to go along with that? Is that uh, as, as the, as the provincial regulations are established? Or uh, is that how we plan to implement?
Yes, Wade.
Thank you, your worship, through to Counsel Elliot. Yes, there's a rollout on um, when step code five is to be implemented. It doesn't mean that we couldn't review it. And within, if the industry was supportive and council was supportive, we could increase that at any time. But there is a target date that we have to do um, to meet the emissions um, projections that we're trying to do with greenhouse gas emissions.
May I continue, your worship?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think it's great that we're moving towards uh, efficiency and the step code three is a, is a wonderful uh, move. Just uh, some background, I, I've just been reading up on Vancouver and some of their, they, they've been early to implement to step code five or, or net zero or net zero ready. But they're repealing that, that there seems to be a bit of a backlog on uh, while the costs have gone uh, you know, significantly higher. And the backlog and the process is, is, is delaying home construction, which is desperate in Vancouver. So there are, there are, there is baggage that goes along with ma, making that move possibly early. In Vancouver's case, maybe they've gone too soon, too far, too fast. Just, just a general comment, if that makes sense.
Yep. Thank you for that. Any further comments on the uh, on the bylaw discussion paper? Saying none. Thank you, Ms. Wade, Mr. Seer. Appreciate uh, your input. We're going to move on now to uh, Johnson Heights neighborhood plan update. I know you have a presentation. Ms. Lernard is here. Uh, so go ahead. I'm just going to be off screen for a moment as I get a glass of water. But I have still hearing what you're saying. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. We are presenting the Johnson Heights neighborhood plan update today. And many of you are um, familiar with uh, Ms. Lernard, who has been helping us with the, our first neighborhood plan and our OCP um, engagement process. So Ms. Lernard is going to um, update you today with where we are at with the Johnson Heights neighborhood plan. So Kelly, if I could turn it over to you?
Thank you, Mary Ann. Um, everyone can see my screen okay, the PowerPoint? You're good? Okay. Mary Ann, can you see the screen, the PowerPoint?
Yep, I can.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, your worship and council, uh, for having me here today. The purpose of our presentation is essentially to provide an update to council on the Johnson Heights neighborhood planning process. Uh, and just a quick refresher on um, on what, why we're doing the neighborhood plan. It's actually the first plan initiated for Rebel Stoke. Um, we had a number of developers, or sorry, landowners up in the area that were interested in exploring development for their parcels. Uh, so Development Services initiated a comprehensive approach rather than one-off uh, development proposals uh, to create a neighborhood, a complete neighborhood in the area. Uh, we've been providing updates to council along the way. And uh, throughout that process, we've been um, updating and revising the land use concept and associated infrastructure improvements required. And um, we've also been working with the public along the way as well and engaging with them and keeping in, them in the loop on progress on the process. Uh, so today we'll focus on land use and infrastructure. So the concept uh, that we have before you has been um, presented to the community members um, earlier in the year. And we received feedback and support on, on the direction that we're going with the plan. And I'll just do a quick walkthrough. Most of this information is in your uh, agenda report. Um, but you'll see we have the Trans Canada Highway up here, uh, bordering the north side of the neighborhood plan. Um, and you enter into the neighborhood, the one access along Oak Drive. And what we're planning is an extension over to Townley Street to provide secondary access. Um, and then when you look at the neighborhood from the west to the east, we start with a single family um, residential component over here. Um, there's interesting topography and constraints there, so that's a suitable uh, use for the area. And then as you move over to the purple area, you'll see um, the existing Bigby Brewery Lands and the Coast Hotel. And moving further down, the brown um, indicates live work units, which are a great transition from say a brewery area into a more residential area. Um, and then we have multifamily uh, transitioning over to single family over by the Johnson Heights strata area. Uh, we're transitioning uh, single family to respect the existing development there. Along Oak Drive, we're proposing a main street concept. So it would be commercial uh, on the ground floor level. And then above that, uh, we're proposing residential and potentially um, some office use as well. So you'd have a, a main street feel in the, in the center of, of Oak Drive. The campground area is uh, to remain a campground. The current owners aren't interested in developing uh, that area into a different use. But uh, what we'll be proposing in the neighborhood plan is that eventually it would transition to residential, um, as that's uh, needed use in Rebel Stoke to support the growing population. Uh, the light green area near the Trans Canada Highway, uh, there's potential for a hotel there and um, and highway commercial as well. And you'll see along the edge near the CP rail tracks on the west, there's a greenway proposed um, for pedestrian access and activity and parks um, located throughout uh, the neighborhood as well. So in terms of um, estimates for residential units and population, um, currently there's, there are a hundred, approximately a hundred parcels of single family in the area and strata developments. So that's around a population of about two hundred and thirty people. Um, we're estimating on the lens without the campground area, about three hundred and fifty uh, units. And then that would be around a seven hundred and seventy person population in the area. When we did the OCP population projection report, um, we estimated out to twenty forty one. And so this development um, a, area in the Johnson Heights neighborhood could provide about forty percent of the new units required for uh, the projections that, the projection estimates that we had completed. Uh, the commercial component, so there's a, a mix of potential uses. Um, it is important to state that there are no big box uh, stores uh, proposed for this area. It's smaller retail uh, footprint. So it could be a mix of uh, small businesses, restaurants, um, potentially a convenience uh, or grocery store. Um, it would also have potential for uh, not-for-profit um, childcare or other health services. And then the um, there's employment opportunity as well in terms of live work units and an office space. The hotel, it could accommodate around uh, ninety beds. Um, and again, that's, that's potential. Um, it's not confirmed. So overall about thirty um, commercial units. In terms of infrastructure, uh, we had um, an analysis done on water, wastewater, stormwater and transportation needed to support the concept. So um, I'll just talk a little bit about um, each of the components and the um, the overall water needs uh, for the proposed um, scale of development would require additional water capacity. And that's being considered under the overall city servicing for water. And it um, would likely tap into a new water reservoir for the city. Um, so that's the, the water servicing. Uh, potential uh, sanitary sewer upgrades would be needed to service the development. And uh, that also is tied into the proposed powerhouse road sanitary sewer lift station. And then in terms of um, stormwater management, the proposal is that um, for the Johnson Heights neighborhood, we would require low impact development proposals for stormwater. Um, and then if that could not be technically achieved, then there would be the option um, to do more traditional stormwater management in the air and that would be a trunk system. Um, next I'm going to talk about the connection here. This is the Oak Drive connection over to Townley. So when we initially started talking to landowners in the area and existing residents, it became very clear that one of the biggest challenges is safe access into and out of the community. With only the one access at Highway one and Oak Drive, we, basically you have residents that have to sit there to try and access the highway on a busy weekend for, for quite a long time. Um, it's also definitely a safety issue. So um, we took away two scenarios to look at and analyze and, and look at costing on them. Um, and we looked at the Highway one and Oak Drive intersection improvements. Uh, we were in discussions, we have been in discussions with um, Ministry of Transportation staff. Uh, we provided a traffic analysis based on the development scale. And their response back was it doesn't meet warrants for signalization. So they would not support any signalization based on the technical numbers. Um, and the other part of that is that the changes to the intersection, such as signalization, may not align with um, future plans for expanding the highway. Um, so that was also kind of a red flag for them. Um, and the other portion of that, based on kind of what we were trying to achieve within the neighborhood plan, was uh, pedestrian and cyclist safety and access, which um, the highway signalization didn't, didn't help that cause. So we also looked at um, what the new Oak Drive complete street connection would mean. And basically that provides uh, both a secondary access, which is uh, good planning practice and, and allows for a second access for emergency vehicles. Um, it improves the pedestrian and cycling access. And it also aligns with an OCP policy in terms of um, developing a secondary access to Johnson Heights. Um, the other piece of transportation, um, analysis that we did was pedestrian connectivity. Um, initially we, when we talked to the community, that was kind of on their wish list. It'd be great to have a pedestrian bridge connecting us into town. And so we looked at that and we investigated it. And we met with CP. Uh, their reaction was it's very expensive. Uh, we had a costing analysis done by our engineering consultants, um, and the cost was high. And that's due to the, um, the width of the right of way that CP has in that area. Um, and it's also the, um, the structure would have to be reinforced because the track is on a curve and a slope there. Um, so that really increases the cost. Um, the other piece is kind of the qualitative and the practicality of it. So pedestrians over that area would end up in, in the industrial area. And it's unlit, um, safety could be an issue. Um, and so that was another consideration. So when we met with, um, the community in, I believe, April, uh, we let them know that this likely was not feasible. And, um, so that was, they acknowledged it and we didn't get any, um, strong pushback or questioning on that. Um, and speaking of engagement, uh, we have had, um, a few different, uh, touchpoints with the community. The most recent, uh, was between February and April of this year. We had the online discussion board up for, um, residents to look at the concept and provide their comments. We got some great comments and questions on there. And then we had, um, a live, uh, remote session about the, uh, concept and infrastructure improvements. We presented the same information to them that you're hearing today, um, to get an understanding of, of, you know, what was the support level of that. And those that commented did support the direction we were going. And so, um, our next step is to work through the policy and, um, draft the, the Johnson Heights Neighborhood Plan, which we are, um, planning to bring back to council in June. Um, we would also like to have online engagement again, uh, for the public to provide feedback on the plan itself. And then have another live, um, engagement session, either remote or in person, uh, depending on what we're allowed to do at that time. So, um, that wraps up my part of the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Lernard. Any, uh, questions or comments, uh, from Ms. Lernard regarding Johnson's Heights and, uh, the neighborhood plan? I think it's just a positive that you've had, uh, so much input from the neighborhood as to what they want for the future. Uh, it's actually a positive going forward. Counselor Palmer?
Thank you, Mary Solz. Uh, and thank you, Ms. Lernard, on the presentation. So yeah, it's, it's helpful. I guess one thing, and we didn't have this PowerPoint in our, our package. So I just would request that we get the PowerPoint is because especially that sort of, it's kind of semi zoning map is particularly of interest because that visual is just so much easier to follow. Um, on the transportation, um, so the eastern access or the high, you know, they, and I'm not following that entirely. I'm just wondering if that, that ought to, you're recommending the second option or that's the one that you're looking at is the new Oak Drive Complete Street Connection to Townley? Is that, I'm understanding that correctly? Um, so, you know, I'm not sure. Maybe it was in the PowerPoint, but just showing that conceptually where that looks like, that would be a really useful map for me to, and I think for the community, because that's a big concern, not just for Johnson Heights, but also the whole idea of a second, secondary access to, to the community. So that would be useful if we were able to get that.
If, if I may, through your worship, um, it is actually on the concept. It's showing, uh, that connection. So I can, um, send through, um, Ms. Wade if, if that will help with the, the concept map. And it will also be part of the, um, draft neighborhood plan when it comes to council as well.
Okay. Awesome. Thank, thank you.
Ms. Wade?
Yes, thank you, worship. Just to add on that, yes, the, the concept for the secondary, uh, network has been developed over this last year in consultation with MOTI and our consultants and internal departments. And it is available on the Talk Revelstoke page as well. It is there. It is, as, um, Ms. Lernard said, on the map as well. It has been, um, considered with engineering involved with it. Um, and it's conceptual and we've run the, the numbers on it. So we also have all the costing for this infrastructure, which we, uh, will also be brought into the neighborhood plan. And in the implementation section of the neighborhood plan, this will outline how this will be rolled out as far as covering those costs.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, your worship. Just, uh, I, I know this is a, a, a concept that is, is laid out for many years into the future. Um, the secondary access may be problematic. I think there's some hurdles to overcome in getting a secondary road there. The transportation, uh, the province's transportation board has to be consulted and they have to approve. So there is some trickiness to getting, getting a second access up, up to that area. The developer or the landowner that's currently got, got a proposal on the table. I mean, do we have to have everything lined up, all the ducks in a row before we, we give any approval to this guy? Cause he's sitting there with the land. He's, he purchased it and he's wanting to develop, but we're, we're still in limbo. So I'm just wondering, is this get the road straightened out first and then allow development? Or, or how do, how do, how do we navigate this, this, this situation?
Go ahead, Ms. Wade.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Uh, so let me just explain, um, through to Counsel Elliot. So when we embarked on this, um, there was a group of landowners, um, that joined together to do comprehensive planning. The person that you're talking about was part of that. And we've all agreed to work together. The, the understanding was that we had to amend the OCP. This is our first neighborhood plan. So in order for the zoning of those lands to move forward, they need an amendment in the neighborhood plan to a land designation that would allow them to do what their plan is. So it's very important about the sequence of these documents because the OCP gives the land designation to permit the zoning. So what is happening with that application is this is going to be coming before council, but it's coming in behind the neighborhood plan. Cause the neighborhood plan needs to inform that development. So you're going to see in the next, the upcoming months, um, that plan coming in behind, that application coming in behind this neighborhood plan. So it is, it is moving with this and it is part of this. And we've been moving in tandem with them for, uh, over a year now to inform the neighborhood plan and to bring this all forward.
Any further comment, Counsel Elliot?
Well, I, I, I agree. It's great to have the plan and get the zoning in place. I just, just wonder if, if, I mean, I, I've been in that situation where I'm waiting on a, on a, on a, on a pre, a concept of how to get approved. And I think the one proponent has been, he, he prompted it and the hoteliers and all the other guys are, and the neighborhood design are saying this is what we would like. The neighborhood would like a commercial center up there. But I, I don't know if that fits in with our community plan. Is it going to be worthwhile for $10 million to build a road? Are those neighbors up there? Are the existing residents up there willing to pay for that? That's, that, that has to be presented. If we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, design a neighborhood on the fringe of our city, they have to say, these are the, going to be the potential cost. You guys are going to have to bear the burden of that. So they can dream up whatever they want, but if they don't know the whole story, then, then it's just a wasted effort.
And I think, uh, if I may, uh, Ms. Wade, I think staff, uh, and, and our consultant, Ms. Lernard are explaining those processes as we move along. And that's all part of, uh, of planning a neighborhood is, uh, so there's no surprises as we move forward. But as before this is completed, it will, uh, it will go back to the community. Is that not correct? And, uh, and they'll be able to, uh, give final input. So.
Yeah. May I continue? I, I just, just worry about the, about the, the, a developer up there hanging on, on, on for the last couple of years, trying to wonder what, what he should be doing. And that, that would be my, I'd be just standing, standing in, uh, defending him. That's awesome.
Yep. Appreciate that. He's reached out as well. And I believe, uh, our staff are communicating with him. So I'll go back to Ms. Wade before we go to Counselor Palmer.
Thank you, worship. I, I just wanted to clarify that, um, this has been a, a very informed, engaged, uh, process where we have worked through opportunities and constraints so that the six landowners who have been part of this are very aware of, um, what can, what can be built, what the land would be, what the tolerance are, working within, um, where we're trying to move, uh, with our OCP and what we know about the OCP. And we have been working very cohesively with this group and we have, um, provided the infrastructure and the list of requirements. And a lot of those infrastructures, um, will be sorted out in the plan to, to determine if they can be a DCC project or not. Right now, uh, probably, you know, if there's a future water reservoir, which will be part of the water study that is being done by Director Black, then that could be coming to development cost charge. Some of the other, uh, costs in regard to the network road may be triggered by development and phase. And those conversations have been had about how infrastructure may be triggered and how that will be, uh, paid for by the various developers involved. And it would be outlined in a development agreement, similar to what we have done with the resort municipality and Hay Road, where we lay out the, how that infrastructure is triggered and what percentage is, um, borne by what developer. So these are all coming and these are all been discussions as we move forward. And the, the costing of those things have been, um, we've been, talked about it at high level and will be further discussions about that. And we are working with that applicant in regards to where they're at, with their development process and what they need as we move forward. And we do that on a very regular basis.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Wade. Counselor Palmer?
Thank you, Mary Solz. Uh, to the planner, so just on that road, I saw, first of all, I found, I found it on Talk, Talk Revelstoke, the, the map. So it is there. The, on the road, so do we have like order of magnitude cost of that thing? It looks like it's probably pretty expensive because of the terrain and a bridge is requirement. Do we, I just, that's more of a curiosity of order of magnitude or?
Yep. Through your worship to Counsel Palmer, yes, we do. We do have that.
And, and, and do you know what it is offhand? Just?
I'm, uh, if my memory serves me correct, I think it's around 3.5 million.
Okay. Um, maybe not as much as I thought. And that, that road is, is that pretty essential for the, to what the concept that's here? Would you see that as a, and that's maybe more of a question for the Director of Engineering possibly, but that secondary access, do, would that be a, an essential component for this development? Like, or for the whole neighborhood plan as it's presented?
Through your worship to Counsel Palmer, um, it is a desired, it's always been outlined in the OCP for this neighborhood to look for that secondary network because this community has been cut off and going out to the highway hasn't always been the safest. Um, you know, we have looked at it with the Ministry of Transportation, based on the, the densities that we have proposed so far under their modeling. They haven't said that it's a requirement that it should be done. It's best practices for us as planners and engineers to connect that neighborhood to the community, which has been a goal outlined in the OCP. And, um, and in discussions about the pedestrian bridge over the CP, it is much more desired to put the money into an active transportation route to connect. And, and so that is the preferred best planning practices. Um, do we absolutely need it? No. The Ministry of Transportation and highways would let the, the traffic go out because it's not triggering in their modeling, the need for signalization. So we have an option should there be issues with that road and we would work with the Ministry of Transportation and highways, which we have been, and we'd be consulting with them and they know about the options in the, the modeling. So we're very much working in collaboration with them.
Um, uh, thank you. Uh, so yeah, that's good. And I would concur. It definitely would be highly desirable and makes more sense than the pedestrian crossing and stuff. The, on the, uh, so there's some residential area that's looking there. So it's right across, uh, and closer than the current Johnson Heights, um, that mobile home park, uh, to the wastewater facility. And that's an ongoing issue. Was that, has that been sort of flagged in the sort of discussions on the wastewater? Is it kind of not one that's, and, and I suppose the rail uh, noise as well. Cause you have that sort of transitional area that, of residential area that's in closer proximity to the wastewater facility.
Through your worship to Counsel Palmer, when you say wastewater, are you talking the treatment center that's down on Powerhouse?
Yes, yes.
So, um, are you taught, are you wrote, are you trying to say that i- is it the smell or the odor that you think will impact the community? Or is it the impact on infrastructure?
Yeah, well, actually that infrastructure, that's a, another question. But, uh, no, I was more, more on the, the odor issues because that's one of, one of, it's, it's fairly close to the lagoons and, um, it, yeah, that's, I just wondering if it was a consideration. Obviously we're dealing that with the lift to a certain extent to liquid waste management plan, but I was just wondering if that came up much.
To your worship, uh, through to Counsel Palmer, um, to the best of my knowledge, I, um, I don't believe it has to date, but, um, Ms. Lernard can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I don't recall in any engagement stuff so far that has come up at all. And, uh, we also are working quite closely with, um, CP Rail. And one of the things we're looking at as we go into the OCP is also there's a national best practices of designing communities next to railways. And they have some design standards, which we've been talking with CP Rail, which in the past has not been incorporated into any of our policies or bylaws or OCP. So we're looking at how we can integrate that into the OCP because the railway, it has a big impact on our communities. And so that'll be something that we're, um, going to be engaging with CP Rail on and talking about that with the OCP as well. And we're trying to incorporate that into this neighborhood plan as well.
Um, thank you. And through the chair, um, so would you be talking like, uh, sound fence requirements or something like that possibly? I get, I guess that'll, the details, but it's mitigating the noise, I'm assuming.
Through your worship to Counsel Palmer, yes, it's, it's, it's different things, setbacks, buffering, you know, landscaping, fencing. They have various techniques. Um, um, both myself and Ms. Lernard are quite familiar with them and doing master plans in Alberta. And they have quite a, especially in the city of Calgary. So, uh, you know, we're quite familiar with those. So we're going to definitely be working with them. It's got to be a made in Revelstoke, uh, because a lot of them are very, for more urban intense places rather than more resort rural. So, and they're open to working with us on that.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Any further comments, Ms. Lernard and Ms. Wade regarding the presentation?
No, your worship, I were just, uh, we're really looking forward to finalizing the draft plan and bringing it back, um, for, uh, the committee of the whole, and then we'll bring it forward to council after we get comments from that. So you'll be seeing a lot of us over the next few months.
Awesome. Great. Okay. Thank you both. Appreciate it. We're going to move on to item nine C, zoning bylaw comprehensive review. So, uh, we'll carry on with that.
Thank you, worship. Um, I wanted to, uh, we're very excited to get this, uh, before council. There's been a lot of work on, on this, um, comprehensive review bylaw so that we can establish what we call a good baseline clarity document before we do, uh, a subsequent zoning bylaw that will come out of the update to the OCP. Uh, so today we have our consultant, Kevin Brooks, um, who will be here to help us present. I wanted to introduce Kevin Brooks. I've had the pleasure, uh, of working with him. And he has an extreme knowledge in, um, zoning bylaws and updates and all the legalese associated with them. 20 years of experience throughout BC and has been very helpful to myself and Mr. Simon and being able to tackle this big task because it has been quite a daunting task. Uh, this bylaw is from the, was last updated in 1984 and still had a lot of leftovers from 1950. And so we are really looking forward to getting this cleaned up and a good base document that will help not only staff, but also the community to provide clarity in how we can implement our zoning in a much more clear manner. So Mr. Brooks, I'm going to turn, uh, the presentation over to you and I'll let you proceed.
Welcome, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you. Thank you very much, your worship. It's nice to meet all of you, counsel. And thank you very much, Mary Ann. So I do have a brief presentation just to go over sort of the work that we've done over the last few months between Ms. Wade and Mr. Simon and myself tackling the bylaw. Ms. Wade summarized quite well, the complexity of the bylaw due to its age and due to the number of amendments in the bylaw over the last few decades really resulted in some challenges and conflict within the bylaw that really made it difficult for interpretation administration for staff. So our goal really with this review is to begin to look at a bylaw that really is a bylaw that reduces conflicts and allows for ease of administration, but also allows for ease of interpretation. And that's by the end user of this bylaw, which would be the public, your developers and your, your staff and of course yourself when you're making decisions, when things do come forward for your consideration. Can all of you see my screen before I delve into this? Perfect. Can you see my little hand moving around in there too? I tend to be a pointer, so I just like to make sure that people can see my stuff. So, so for our agenda, I'll go over a quick summary of the issues that we've identified to date. I'll go over a little bit of background when this has come before you previously and some of the background that staff has brought forward. Really, the meat of the presentation really is the discussion. These are the things that we've proposed to date to help clean the bylaw up and then what our next steps are moving forward with this. So if we go into the summary of issues, so the key issues really stem, you could group them into three sort of areas. One is the outdated references and unlawful delegation. I sort of group into one. The outdated references is our, the bylaw actually references the municipal act has references to legislation that is no longer valid. So it's updating those outdated references. For me, as a planner, that's a massive pet peeve of mine. And then the unlawful delegation component, unlawful delegation occurs where bylaw delegates a decision to either staff or council or to a, an individual that is not permitted under the legislation. And so that occurs throughout the bylaw, numerous places throughout the bylaw. And that speaks to the age of the bylaw also and the age that the bylaw is done. The other one is I group into what I call general formatting. The nature of the bylaw itself, because of it's been amended so many times, there are so many comprehensive development zones, what you find is that the bylaws are quite chunky. And because of the nature of the formatting, it actually makes it difficult to navigate. If you want a bylaw, you want the bylaw actually easy to navigate again so that everyone can use that bylaw, whether it's a general public, a developer, your staff or yourself having to make those decisions. And then the third is that I've sort of grouped these into is conflict within the bylaw. Conflict within a bylaw is very, very common, especially older bylaws that have been amended numerous times. And so there's a lot of conflict within your existing bylaw where your, a perfect example is parking. You have a parking section and then you have parking embedded in the zones. And what you'll find is if you look at the parking embedded in the zones, a lot of them times are not the same as the parking provisions provided in the supplementary regulation. So you have conflicting parking regulations. That will create conflict when people are interpreting the bylaw. It'll create challenges for staff administering that bylaw. Another issue, definitions. You have definitions embedded actually in the zones, in the permitted use sections, and then you'll have another definition in your definition section for the same use, which say different things. And so you have those kinds of conflicts that are throughout the bylaw causing that challenge of interpretation. So with those summaries of issues, those are the things that we have focused on moving forward. Some of the other things we looked at is some, some density considerations, inconsistency and density between some of the residential zones and commercial zones. And that was a supplementary memo that was provided to council today also. So if we look at a little bit of background, there was an update presentation to Committee of the Whole back in March from staff. The focus of what we're trying to do here, Ms. Wade touched on, we're trying to focus predominantly on housekeeping amendments that aren't changing the intent of the bylaw at this time, but we're trying to get the bylaw modernized to a point that the town can, or the city can then take a leap into a more comprehensive review to deal with some of the more complex issues of the number of CDAs, comprehensive development zones, looking at is there possibility of consolidation, consolidation of commercial zones, possibility consolidation of different residential zones, or the need for additional zones that may be required based on the, the new official community plan work that is occurring at this time. So when we delve into the different amendments that we're looking at, we see the majority of these as key housekeeping amendments, again, with the idea of creating a more user-friendly document for everyone, dealing with those references and then trying to consolidate regulations that are dispersed throughout, like I was saying, having definitions embedded in permitted use or having regulations actually embedded in definition, pulling those out of there and consolidating them and putting them in the appropriate place within the bylaw itself, again, for ease of interpretation, ease of access. An example of that would be that there's landscaping regulations spread in different places, but you also have landscaping regulations and you have supplementary regulations, trying to consolidate those all into one area, again, for ease of access and ease of finding that and ease of interpretation. Another key component is really trying to enhance the bylaw for, again, interpretation, clarity, and provide key components for things that we know tend to be challenging for everyone when they're looking at them. A key example is building heights, always a challenge interpreting building heights, what is average grade at time of determining building heights. Also things such as setbacks and things of that nature are also can be quite challenging. So we've provided some diagrams to help with those interpretations. Again, we spoke to the regulations being embedded, embedded within zones or embedded in permitted uses, stripping those out, cleaning those up and consolidating them. And then the regulations are embedded in the definitions. When I get to the definition section, I'll touch on this a little bit more, but we did do a complete use reconciliation where we actually listed every use in the bylaw and we cross-reference that with the definitions to ensure that the, we have clear definitions provided for every use for that interpretation component. Definitions really are the bones of a zoning bylaw. It's what we hang the meat off of, what we hang everything off of for our interpretation when we're, when we're looking at regulating uses in a community. And so what we found when we're doing that use reconciliation is there a lot of missing definitions. You had many uses listed in the actual zoning bylaw that had no definition at all, or that we had definition, as I mentioned, you'd have a definition embedded in a zone and a definition in definition section that completely conflicted with one another. So what we did is when we reconciled the use, we reviewed all the definitions to have one definition for every use and that is now in the updated bylaw that we are proposing. We also looked at, looking at permitted uses and matching permitted uses. So what I, what we mean by that is there is numerous uses for the same, for the same fundamental use. So that's numerous uses had fundamentally the same definition. So we'd consolidate those uses under one particular use and create a definition for those use. Again, the goal of creating that greater clarity and consistency across the entire bylaw. But just an example of some of the diagrams that we brought forward, like I said, just to help with, with ease of interpretation, probably one of the greatest one is average grade always is a struggle in a lot of situations and where you measure your height of your building from. And so we've provided some additional diagrams to help with that. We've also, another one that always seems to be a challenge is the regular lots and where you measure your lot setbacks from and your side yard setbacks from to provide that. We are actually going to modify this diagram to also provide clarity on where to measure lot width from because that can always be a challenge. Again, providing greater clarity and consistency of interpretation and application of the bylaw. Another thing that we have tackled as part of this is we are proposing some housing option recommendations, basically updating both the secondary suites provisions of the bylaw and accessory dwelling units provisions of the bylaw. Again, this is some direction that came out of discussion with regards to the official community plan and the need for additional housing, that missing middle housing that we're seeing in communities right across British Columbia. Revelstoke is certainly not alone in those challenges. And so we have provided recommendations on how to deal with that, both for how to deal with suites within a dwelling unit and how to deal with secondary dwelling units such as carriage houses and garden suites. To give you an example, this is how a garden suite or carriage house could be permitted on one of the small R1 lots in Revelstoke that is based on the current zoning bylaw. And as you can see from this, there's provisions we put in place requiring walkways to access a garden suite when there is no lane. So this would be in a situation where there is no lane, must access by a walkway to the rear building, must provide parking for all three units, how the side yard setbacks must be applied. And you can see how those provisions could occur potentially on one of the smaller R1 lots within Revelstoke at this time. One of the most challenging components of all of this was really looking at the parking regulations, mainly because of the way that the parking regulations that are currently embedded, how inconsistent they were with the regulations that were centralized in the parking provisions themselves. So what we had to do was actually go through all the zones that had provisions and look at what the provisions were under the existing centralized parking regulations and try not to change anything to make a whole bunch of non-conforming situations within the community. We went through this and we, we provided recommendations on parking provisions for each of the different uses. We have worked hard to ensure that each listed use has a parking provision associated with it. The current regulations are both based more on zoning category going, if you're commercial, you need this kind of parking. What we've done is we've focused on use versus zoning category to provide much more clarity around parking regulations. We've also provided, proposed for cash and lieu for parking in situations and criteria on how council can consider cash and lieu in these instances that are very explicit. So it's not, it's not a discretionary tool. That would be unlawful delegation as we're talking about. This is, if you do this, you are able to provide cash and lieu. Some of those types of provisions are proximity to amenities, proximity to buses, things of that nature. Also in regards to the OCP and desire for more food security, we have made some proposals in regards to enabling crop production in all zones within the community and some provisions around greenhouses in the community. We've also provided a definition of greenhouse, of course. The provisions of greenhouses really are in regards to solar access. What you find with food security and trying to provide solar access is there's many situations where a greenhouse cannot be located in the backyard if you want to grow food in it. So we've provided provisions on, that would enable council to consider amending the bylaw to allow for greenhouses to be located in the front yard. These are examples of, again, typical sized lots in Revelstoke and how a greenhouse could be fit into the front yard in that situation. We've recommended minimum setback requirements, maximum size of greenhouse within that setback requirement and how they'd need to be situated and sited on a property in that instance. Of course, if you have solar access, you could obviously always have your greenhouse in your backyard. Again, this is just in support of that food production and something that council can consider as part of these amendments that we are proposing. So that is the high level overview. In summary, as I've sort of stated this several times, what we're really looking at is greater clarity, consistency of administration of the bylaw for everyone involved. And what that does is begin to reduce conflict. It reduces conflict between the staff and the developer or the public. It also reduces conflict between staff and council when dealing with these decisions because the interpretation of the bylaw becomes clearer for everybody involved moving forward. Our next steps are to get this out to the community, let the community provide comment on this, give all of us feedback on if this makes sense or where things that we may not have quite threaded the needle on that. And then once that is done, do the revisions as required and bring a repeal and replace bylaw forward to council for consideration. We are recommending a repeal and replace bylaw because of the sheer number of just formatting changes we had to do to the bylaw. If you were to look at it now, it will not even look like the same bylaw because of the challenges in formatting with the existing bylaw. And so we are recommending repeal and replace in this as just due to the, due to just the formatting nature, not even some of the other recommended amendments such as the scope and scale and definition recommendations we've made. With that, we are happy to take any questions from council.
Counselors, any questions for Mr. Brooks? Counselor Palmer?
Thank you, Mary Souls. I do want to delay a little bit, so I'm not really trying to jump ahead on people. Thank you very much for the presentation. Very exciting to have the zoning bylaw redone. The, assuming there is not substantive changes based on input from the community or council, how much of the actual sweat has gone? Like, how much of the work, how far along are you on actually redoing the bylaw?
Through your worship to Counsel Palmer, we have a, probably a 85% draft, 90% draft completed with the revisions done at this time. We do have some tweaks to do, some, a little bit more clarity on some of the diagrams, just to tweak those diagrams to make sure they work properly. But we're, we are quite far along with regards to having the actual document cleaned up at this stage.
Great. Thank you. Through the chair, the, this temporary building, I'm not sure if you were online when I was asking regarding the building bylaw. So just was looking at our current zoning bylaw regarding temporary use. So again, there's, there's this current conflict in, in the community and around temporary buildings. The existing bylaw refers to temporary use and has some other sort of vague wording around temporary. How is that getting cleaned up? And I'm not sure if you've done that part already in the review, but how, how do you envision the temporary, temporary building? So we're talking temporary use and then other temporary kind of buildings, whether it's construction or other things. If you could comment on that, that'd be great.
And Mr. Simon and Ms. Wade, please interject as I madly continue to talk because I love to talk because I'm a planner and so I just tend to ramble on. Through your worship to Counselor Palmer, yes, we have discussed temporary structures, actually within the, within the bylaw and how temporary structures are administered. We have relied on really, the strength of the building bylaw is really where you want to likely regulate your temporary structures predominantly and then deal with use specifically in your zoning bylaw would be, is my recommendation in the, in the discussion that we've had as a team on this.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. Just a comment to staff. I, the, I, the documentation for this wasn't actually, at least it's not in my agenda package, so it got, got missed. There might be a little adjustment there. And I'm not sure if there's more information that was missing. It looks like the building bylaw was duplicated in there, but that's, that's all I have for now, Mary Souls. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments, counselors? Counselor Elliot?
Yes, your worship, just the repeal and replace process. So we decommission all the existing bylaws and then come in with the new ones. Is that the plan?
Go ahead, Mr. Brooks.
Through your worship, yes, that would be the plan. When you do a real repeal and place bylaw, what does is you basically, you're concurrently repealing the existing and replacing with the new. And so it runs concurrently when you're, when you're doing your bylaw adoption protocol.
And if, I mean, I think you're, you're getting to all the sore spots in our, in our existing bylaws. If, if there's an error or something that, I mean, the number of bylaws are pretty significant. If we recognize a problem on the new version, are we entrenching it? Do we have to go through the same process? Because, because the existing bylaws have been modified and all the corrections have been made up to this point. So, so you're coming with some new ones with your best, best interpretation of what should be in place. And these are, these are what we were left with for the future, but we may need to change them or there may have been some errors along the way. How easily are we able to modify?
Through your worship, zoning bylaws, modification of a zoning bylaw is just a standard amendment. And so if there's additional housekeeping amendments, once And so if there's additional housekeeping amendments, once we get that baseline bylaw done that we're talking about, this would be that baseline bylaw that we begin to build on. Once we have that in place, if there's little errors or little things that don't seem to work, minor amendments to that zoning bylaw can be completed, uh, initiated by council if necessary uh, to address some of those small housekeeping amendments going forward.
Yeah, cause I, I think once you come in with a whole fresh, fresh Bible of regulation that we have to live to, there may be some need to, 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 to fine tune it as we go along here.
Uh, through your worship, if I may, um, as I had mentioned, the, what we've done, uh, we've done in a manner that does not change the intent or, or uh, nature of the bylaw itself. It is really just to clean it up and modernize the bylaw. The bylaw itself should fundamentally be the same uh, going forward. However, what we've done is provide things to uh, give greater clarity to the bylaw. So what you should find is if a council chooses to repeal in place and bring this byline uh, into effect, that the functioning and how it impacts your community should be uh, should be very little difference from the bylaw that you have in place now.
Ms. Wade?
Thank you.
Thank you, worship. Yeah, just to um, build on what Mr. Brooks has said. The idea of this is um, to basically bring it into the twenty-first century. And what we're doing is taking, even though the bylaw was last updated in nineteen eighty-four and it's got a hundred and eighty-three amendments, we're taking that whole package and we're gonna basically put it in a new package. And we're gonna clarify the definitions, we're gonna bring it in line with the current legislation and make it much more user-friendly so that we can um, not have these, all these conflicts, which makes it very difficult for staff in interpreting um, a lot of the bylaws, just the way it's embedded either in um, a zone. You got definitions, so there's lots of conflict. So we really want to make it much more user-friendly and in line with the current legislation, with the right references to the current legislation, clean up the definitions and add in or build upon um, the things that we've heard, like building height and um, secondary suites and carriage houses and suites. So we, we can actually have something that enables us uh, with a much more user-friendly uh, document moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Palmer?
Thank you, Mayor Souls. Uh, timelines, when, when do we anticipate this uh, would be coming back to council for um, meetings?
Ms. Wade?
Through your worship, yes. So uh, after today, uh, we will be preparing the bylaws that, that'll take, um, we've got them drafted and now what we have to do is go through, work with corporate and we finalize these and put them in our format. And then we would bring it forward to council. Um, I think we're looking um, either, you know, within the very short period, within the next two months, it'll be before council.
Good, thank you. Any further comments, councilors? Counselor Elliot?
Oh, I, I just think it's, it's wonderful that this is happening. It's been a long thorn for, I'm sure Mary Anne and uh, everybody in the, in the building world. It's, it's been long overdue, so it's, it's very welcome.
Right, awesome. All right, thank you, Mr. Brooks, Mr. Simon, Ms. Wade. Appreciate your uh, input and uh, and the presentation on zoning. So we are now going to uh, move on to uh, item nine D, the policy review revenue and property tax. So um, Ms. McCabe, are you here? There you are.
I am here. I'm going to try to share my screen.
Awesome.
That's a bit nerve-wracking trying to make sure you get the right one. Look at, Jamie is showing up for her to. Okay, now I have to share my screen. And it's this one. So I've lost you guys, so I'm assuming you can see.
We can see, yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, so we're gonna move on from bylaws on building bylaws and zoning bylaws, which are probably a little bit more interesting and uh, talk a little bit about revenue on funding sources for municipalities. So hopefully after two hours of development services stuff, um, we can stay awake for some finance stuff. And I don't have quite the same pretty pictures that of course, Mrs. Wade has. She's uh, much better at that stuff. Um, little bit of background before I start, um, at the May ninth, um, council meeting, um, council passed a resolution that we, um, that staff bring forward a discussion paper on policy F nine. Um, and so policy F nine is our revenue and property tax policy. Um, it's actually a very, very broad and very in-depth range that's covered in that policy. And so today I'm going to be talking about the revenue, overarching revenues in general and at a higher level and the objectives and goals and things like that. And then at a subsequent meeting, we can talk about property taxes in particular. So, oh, how do I make it move? Uh-huh, there we go. Um, so just uh, high level, there are, um, the sources of revenue that the city can collect um, are identified in the community charter. I've just kind of given you a list of the key ones that we use. Obviously fees would be our user fees and charges bylaw. Um, and that covers things like what we charge for the recreation center, um, transit fees, garbage, utility fees, um, permitting fees, obviously development services, those kind of things. Um, property taxes, of course, everybody knows what those are. They just got their tax notices recently. Uh, the next one would be parcel taxes. We have one parcel tax that we currently use and that is for sewer frontage. And that is uh, put, that is to help support the uh, sewer utility. Uh, we have a few local service area taxes. We have uh, Clearview Heights, um, Big Eddie, and then we have Thomas Brook, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. And then last, there's obviously the fines and the penalties as well that we're allowed to administer. So mostly that would be things like um, uh, bylaw enforcement fines, um, and things like that, obviously tax penalties. So those are actually established as well by provincial legislation. So that's a high-level review of our sources, uh, just the fees and things and revenues we can collect. There we go. So I can talk a little bit about the guiding principles of when, when we choose to charge things like say a fee um, versus a property tax or um, those two in particular. And so the, one of the guiding principles and the goals that municipalities and local governments uh, try to do is we try to make sure that we are funding ongoing expenditures with ongoing revenues. So we want to have a source of revenue that is continual and, and predictable. Um, so property taxes are usually a key one, user fees can be as well. Um, and then we use that to fund our ongoing expenditures. So the things that we do day in and day out, year over year, you know, um, cleaning the roads, moving the snow removal, taking away the garbage, uh, making sure the taps turn on and that when you flush the toilet, that the stuff goes away. Um, and then the other side of that is what we call one-time revenues that, and those should be used to fund. Oh, I said revenues, one time, one time revenue should be used to fund a one-time expenditure. So things like that would be your capital projects. Um, or you, sometimes there are some shorter-term operating, operating type expenses such as OCP reviews, uh, bylaw updates, things like that, that you don't do on an annual basis. Um, then those you try to fund out of, um, you can fund out of shorter-term revenues. What you don't want to be doing is funding ongoing expenditures out of a one-time revenue. Because if you do that, then obviously you have to be looking for a new revenue source on a regular basis. Um, and then the other thing we look at is we look at what we call private versus public goods. And so a private good or service would be where you can make a direct connection between the person receiving the benefit of the good or service. And so a good example of that is when a developer or a, or a homeowner comes in and wants to, a property owner comes in and wants to get a building permit, um, they pay a fee to do that. And so there's a direct connection between the benefit they're getting, which is the permit to build, um, and the fee that they're paying. Um, the other one would be what we call public um, goods or services. And that would be things where there's no real direct connection between the people using the good or service and how to get them to pay for it. And so snow removal, road maintenance, that kind of thing is a really good example of that. And so we tend to cover those kind of public, um, public goods, so to speak, out of um, property taxes because we can't make a direct connection between who's using it. And so then getting a direct connection of who should pay for it is a little bit more challenging. There are some that will be considered to be mixed benefits, so they have a private and a public component to the good. And so the, a good example of those would be recreational facilities, um, and public transit. So public transit, um, you know who's riding, the person riding the bus pays a fee to ride it. So there's a direct connection there because they're getting that trip. There's also some public good to the um, community as a whole because we're reducing the wear and care and greenhouse gases and providing an overall benefit to the community by having a service like that available. Um, same thing for recreational facilities, obviously, um, most communities, um, they're considered a mixed use. There's a public benefit to everybody because they're available. And then there's a direct benefit to the people that actually go and actually use the facilities. So any, your worship, any questions?
Any questions, councilors? Counselor Elliot?
So uh, the local area fees that you mentioned for Clearview Heights and uh, the Big Eddie. We had just had a presentation about Johnson Heights. That would be equivalent. We'd had to find some charges there if we're putting a road and a sewer system and a upgrade to the water line and all that sort of stuff. So all the users would probably, in that area, would likely be this year, get their share of a fee, right?
Definitely when it comes to water and sewer extensions of services, that is traditionally the way it is done, is with a local service area fee. And so that is what we've done in Clearview Heights. We extended, the city extended sewer up into that area and those residents pay for the cost of doing that. Um, same with the Big Eddie, we took over the water system over there and then had to do major upgrades to it. So again, um, they're paying for a portion of that cost. And the same thing with Thomas Brook as well, yes. Those, um, putting a road access in, that could be a little bit more, um, um, there could be some public benefit to that as well. It would be something would need to be reviewed at the time to determine how to actually cover the costs of that, yes.
Yeah, I just, I think that's the tricky one for me. I, I, I think they body in up there knowing full well that this is the situation with the access and they're tying into the community. Um, yeah, anyway, it's just, that's another discussion.
Yep, and it's definitely something that we'll have to uh, have to look at when that time comes, definitely.
And just uh, talking, you mentioned about the sources of income, you, uh, business licensing and uh, is that what you, under fees or is that? Okay.
That would be considered a fee, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Palmer?
Thank you, Mayor Souls. Uh, and thank you, Ms. McCabe, uh, for the presentation and the uh, little educational piece for us. So it seems to me that the, the policy F nine right now is, is largely state sort of general motherhood finance statements. Um, when he actually gets down to policy stuff that council can actually give some direction to this, where we're going, it's on the second page of, when I look at it, the first one being historically revenues from property value taxes have been in the twenty to thirty percent range of total city funding. Um, and it, it's council's objective to maintain this contribution of property tax revenues within that historical range. So that to me is a policy statement and uh, maybe it's something for us to ponder a little bit more and say, well, is, is that really what we want? The uh, next one that I see is um, again, largely motherhood's, financial motherhood statements. Uh, proceeds from borrowing, um, fluctuate, says fluctuates. The city aims to not exceed seventy-five percent of its total borrowing capacity. So again, that's, that's a distinct policy item. Uh, where are we on the uh, borrowing right now or capacity?
Um, through your worship, I don't actually know what the percentage is at this point. I do know we're well within that seventy-five percent. I'd have to come back to you and uh, I can come back and let you know where that is. Um, yeah.
That'd be, that'd be useful to know. And again, sort of give us a feel as to where we are as far as the policy. And then, then the last one, I think this is the important one for, and again, I'm looking forward, looking to the next uh, budget cycle when we go into that. So the property, the proportion of property tax burden borne by the residential sector has been less than fifty percent. Uh, it's council, city council's intention that the proportion share increase to at least fifty percent. And that's potentially a contentious little issue. It has been in the past. Um, so again, that is very distinctly a policy item that I think that we should really wrestle through. Uh, do, do you know, I've had, maybe you'll give us that information. Do you know what our split is right now between uh, residential and the rest of the tax base?
Yeah, um, yeah, you, through your worship, yes, it's um, definitely sitting around the fifty, fifty mark right now. Residential is probably a little bit more than that. It may be fifty-one at this point.
Okay, so that's, that has kind of been, been met. So I, 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 I think that, I think this is good information. I think it's stuff that we can ponder. I, I don't really see us doing any major adjustments to it right now, other than I think these are things to consider whether this is really where we want to go in the next budget cycle. Um, thank you, staff and Mayor Souls.
Great. Any further comments or questions? It's Carrie on, Ms. McCabe.
Uh, sure. And so um, the next little bit is talking a little bit about the sources of funding. So um, I gave you the sources of what we're allowed to collect, but those are the fees that we collect externally. So then there's, we talked a bit about property taxes. We can also um, use um, grants for funding. Um, and then obviously we can al- we can also use operating reserves. So this is things that we can use to fund operating expenses, right? And then sometimes in some communities, they have public-private partnerships. We don't have that at, at the moment in Revelstoke and I'm not sure um, if we will in the future, but it is something that we're allowed to use. Um, and so you'll see it's all ongoing revenues supporting ongoing expenses. Um, and then on the capital side, we can use capital reserves. We often use, in fact, that's probably the predominant use, other than grants, to fund capital projects. Um, and debt would be another one that we use. Again, there can be public-private partnerships that are used, but again, they're not something that we have used um, historically, but they are there. Um, another source is when we're talking about um, cost recoveries and special projects, I want to touch on this just a little bit. Um, when it comes to um, user fees and charges, that's what we use as we, as I was explaining for private goods, um, as well as parcel taxes and local area service taxes. These are all ways to um, pay for um, goods or services that are considered private, where there's a direct connection between the person receiving the benefit of the good or service. And so we do have to be careful, um, when we're setting these, particularly the user fees and charges, that um, we actually are making sure that what we're charging reflects the cost to provide the good or service. Um, we're not allowed to charge more than that to create revenue to support um, other, other expenditures. Um, and we do need to be able to justify the fees that we're charging if we're requested to do that. So, um, yeah, and so that's kind of it, your worship. Uh, I don't have any more.
Okay, uh, Counselor Palmer, you have your hand up. Is that from before? You have another comment?
That was from before, but I, I have another one. So on policy uh, fifteen, it's a very, very lengthy document. So in the opinion of the Director of Finance, is it a little bit too verbose? It seems to me that the policy should be a little bit more focused and succinct.
Um, through your worship, yes. When that policy was written, um, at that time, that was more the style. There was a lot of background information that was provided in, in the policy itself first and then the, and then the, the actual guiding or the, the policy statements are after that. And yes, it would be definitely worth looking at cleaning it up, um, and, and reducing it down to an actual, much clearer policy. And that would be part of what we would do as well with F nine. We'd probably rescind it completely and then do a new policy for it, for the revenue. And then we do a separate one for property taxes. It's a little bit more succinct, so to speak. Um, and then the discussion paper, which is what I provided, would be the background information, the more theoretical concepts that are considered when setting the policy.
Right. Any further comment?
Uh, so then um, through the chair, uh, at, at this point, uh, you've gone through the sort of high-level stuff of all the stuff that, uh, and so that's kind of fulfilling that. I, I think at this point, this maybe is something that maybe gets referred to a finance committee at the future or something like that. I don't, I don't know if staff has sort of any sense. I would, I would like to see them cleaned up and a little bit more succinct. Uh, I just wonder if there's any comments regarding that.
They'll, they'll, go ahead, Ms. McCabe.
I was just gonna say through your worship, yeah, there definitely would be, there's definitely um, a desire by, by staff to clean up, particularly starting with F nine to begin with. Um, and like I said, repealing it and then replacing it with uh, much clearer policies and then working from there on some of the other ones. There's a couple of other policies that also need some work on them. There's a couple of other policies that also need some work on them, and so yes, it'd be nice to definitely tackle a few of them and clean them up.
Mr. Mathuzzi?
Thank you, worship. The, first off, I'd like to thank Ms. Wade for presentation, because I think it's important to set the stage. There's very few things more exciting than municipal finance, my experience. And, you know, the trouble with municipal finance is, it's one of the, you know, we hear from the provincial government about open and transparency, and yet they've crafted a system where all of the information is really geared to go back to the municipal inspector as opposed to our citizens. And so the onus really is on council and the municipality, trying to make municipal finance a little more accessible to the average person because it's not like your average business, you know, the way in which we report out. So I think it's really important to start at a very high level and start breaking down the different pieces. And I know, you know, this was, was the purpose today was just to set the context. So the, the more refined work, and I agree that those, those, those policies really have to be brought up, up to date. And I think one of the most important things that council could achieve in this term is, in fact, just going back and looking at those policies, are they still relevant in 2021? Are those still the types of things that reflect our community, whether it's the percentage, you know, those are things that really should be brought up to date, almost to yearly to say. So I think it's great that the council will get to debate and, and look and discuss those policies. Of course, on the side, there are also a whole other side of things, and those are the, you know, finances that relates to development. And that will be a separate but related process, and I think those will be come forward because, you know, as a, as a fast-growing community, you want to make sure your, your charges and your DCCs and those things are up to date. And I always told the development community that we shouldn't be charging them one dime more for the development than they should, they should pay, but, or nor one dime less, and there has to be a balance in there. So that'll be another really important piece. And like I said, I think some really good work ahead where council can really get into this aspect in a way that I think will bring everything up to date. So that's all I wanted to say, your worship.
Great, thank you. Counsel Elliot?
Yes, Tanya, on page four of your summary there, can you go back to that?
Oh, my apologies, I actually stopped sharing it, so I'm not sure.
I, I'm just, you know, we've had a discussion on short-term rentals. You know, the hotels are upset about any short-term rentals. We're trying to maintain affordability in our town, and one of the avenues that is, that is present for a homeowner is this option of a short-term space in their house. But the gist of it is, no entity is really supporting tourism, except for the tourism entity itself. But the, the RAA, they collect money in taxes from the tourist visitor, the visitor to our town. So really, we don't contribute as a community to the tourism, the hard part of tourism, the physical elements of tourism. So I'm just trying to find, are there options? Other communities like Banff, I mean, they have a key tax for all the businesses in town that, that directly goes to tourism marketing and possibly infrastructure. Whistler has a similar thing. Everybody pitches into the, supporting the tourism entity. And I'm just wondering, I didn't see it in your summary there of options, but I know those are tourism specific, like I'm looking at, could there be a shared? If we had a tourism tax on short-term rentals and the business community, could we share that with infrastructure and supporting tourism? Could that, is that an option?
Through your worship, I'm actually, have not heard of a key tax before. Banff is in Alberta, so they would have a different provincial legislative structure than what we do. But I can certainly find out what Whistler is doing. I can talk with Ms. Wade, she may also have an idea as well, and we can have a look at what they're doing and what options may be available there. I'd have to do some research into it at this point because I haven't heard of it in the past.
Mr. Mathuzzi, in just a minute, Counsel Elliot, just for a moment, Mr. Mathuzzi has a stand-up and he may be able to answer your question. Go ahead, please.
Your worship, and I'm not sure how it relates to the resort community, so not having lived in a resort community, and maybe Ms. Wade could, but certainly Kelowna had a hotel tax that was agreed to, and it was collected by the municipality. And the purpose of that tax was exclusively for marketing. And, you know, the plus side is it created a pool of money that allowed the Kelowna tourism to do some very nice advertising. You know, the downside of it from the perspective of the city of Kelowna is that I'm not sure the agreement was as comprehensive as should, should have been, so it was really very much a hotel tax. And of course, the hoteliers complained that the restaurants didn't contribute, and then meanwhile, the, you know, people who come to town will eat in restaurants and were helping all business. So the hoteliers would like to have seen it broaden to a broader kind of tourism tax. Not sure if the new rules allow you to do that. The other thing is that the city always had a concern that the money went exclusively to marketing. And we thought that it might have been nice if the money could also have been used to actually create events or to support events, because when groups like Ironman came to town and wanted a contribution from the community, the city said, go see tourism, and the tourism said, no, no, we, we only do advertising, we don't, we don't do events. So there is such an animal that exists. I don't know what it's like in relation to the resort community and how it impacts. And, but there is an animal that exists. And in the case of Kelowna, like I said, it's both good and bad. It, I think it's been good for many things, but it did fall short on, on those two areas in terms of who gets, who gets taxed. And secondly, what the tax could be used for. Hopefully that helps.
Ms. McCabe, can you weigh in on the RMI funds, please?
Yes, I, as I say, we do actually, because we are considered, we are a resort community, we do collect the hotel tax, so, and like Kelowna's, it does go predominantly towards marketing. It would be interesting to see whether it's going to be, whether there's a future allowance to extend that out to other businesses, so it's not just the hotels collecting it. I believe that the hotel tax is collected from online accommodation, so I'm not sure, though I guess it would depend for short-term rentals, how they are advertising, but they are required, my understanding is, to collect the hotel tax. And then that, that money comes to the city as, and previously, council resolved to put that aside for affordable housing. And Ms. Braun could speak to that little bit if you wanted further information on that.
Ms. Braun, just weigh in briefly on that, so we're all on the same page.
Sure, sorry, I missed the first part of the conversation, but I heard RMI and my name. So, yes, we do, MRDT taxes collected from all accommodation, including online platforms, OAPs they're called, but we made a motion, as Tanya noted, to separate the MRDT taxes coming in for online accommodation and put it into a fund for affordable housing. And it is specifically for bricks and mortar, it's not for strategies or planning, it's for building units. And that's growing at a rate of about $100, $120,000 a year, and we can allow that to accumulate until we are ready to spend it on housing units. And I think Nicole, or Counselor Charlotte, was asking about event funding and RAW, Tourism Revelstoke, they can use MRDT funds for events, not necessarily all of the costs of events, but promoting the event is half of the cost of the event. So they're able to use MRDT money for events, and we collaborate on that quite often with RMI funding a portion and MRDT funding a portion.
Great, thank you. Ms. Wade, you still have your hand up, I'll get you to weigh in, and then I'll go back to Counsel Elliot.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I just wanted to address the Whistler, Whistler was created under a separate act, Resort Municipality Act, and it has special taxation funds that they can use. And so it's not a good comparable to what our situation is, we're a resort community. And so they have different funding mechanisms on how they collect that not only works with marketing, but it also works for some of the operations within the resort itself to help with flowers and watering and things like that. So it's very different. And they also have a bylaw that actually developers have to pay for employee housing. So we, they actually have a bylaw that is contributing to affordable housing. So it's a very different animal because of the act that it was established under. And it was because of that act, between that and the community charter, or the Vancouver Charter with Gordon Campbell, that Gordon Campbell and Ted Nebeling got together when they were in power in the province and created the Resort Collaborative Group, which is how we now have those funds. And they took those tools that they knew that those special acts had and put them into the community charter and the municipal act so that other resort communities, and then we created a definition, and I just happen to be part of that Resort Collaborative Group that put that all together.
Thank you for that. I'm just gonna go back to Counsel Elliot, I know that we just got a little bit off, off track, but does that answer your question as far as, as extra key tax or that sort of thing?
The sort of information was, yeah, I, I, I'm aware of this, the, the, the funding that we get, but I'm just saying, basically, that tourism tax, there's no contribution from the community. Basically, it's the tourists that pays that money to the hotel, they transfer it on down to the province, province remits back to us, a portion, whatever it is. And basically, no one is contributing to tourism in our town. So I'm just trying to find a different model, is there another way? Let's explore, find a way that the people benefiting from tourism contribute to tourism and growing it. And that's all I'm trying to get to. And I, I'm just looking for a new avenue to generate funds. And I, I, I just wonder, is that, are there opportunities? Should we be exploring them?
Great, that's, actually, thank you for that comment, that you've clarified where you were going with that. Any comment, Ms. McCabe, is there anything that we can do that would help, short of turning people over and shaking their pocket, money from their pockets?
I won't resort to that. Through your worship, I honestly, I've outlined what we're allowed to do under the community charter. It doesn't mean, though, that staff is not always looking for ways to figure out how to get the people that are benefiting from expenditures to actually be helping contribute towards the cost of paying for those. So yeah, we're definitely looking all the time at what other avenues and using as many of the different tools that we have to do that.
Great, thank you. Further follow-up, Ms. Counsel Elliot, follow-up?
Yeah, I just, thank you, your worship. I, I just think we should be actively, I mean, just because Whistler does it one way, we can modify or let's find a new way, let's, let's find, we have obviously benefited from tourism. You know, the, the last year has clearly demonstrated what, what, what impact it has on our community. So the fact that COVID has shut us down, or half, half the, you know, the businesses are struggling is significant. So tourism has an impact. So let's, let's recognize that and, and let's contribute to it, let's build it further. Instead of being defensive and saying, I don't want some vacation rentals, let's all pool and find a way to contribute to tourism and make it, make it a thriving entity and take it further than it is. That's just my soapbox moment, sorry.
Okay, no, thank you, appreciate the comment. Any further comments, Ms. McCabe, regarding your presentation discussion paper?
No, that's it, your worship, thank you.
Counselor, any further comments? Ms. Braun, do you, you still have input you would like to give?
Sure, I just would add that because of our status as a resort municipality, we were eligible for several funding grants that most communities were not. So the Tourism Independent Communities Grant, which gave us 800 and some thousand for repaving the Green Belt and creating washrooms at Wooden Head Park as an example, the SEREP funding for building a multi-use pathway from the resort to connect it to the city is another example. So while we're not seeing contributions from individual businesses, tourists themselves are contributing, as you've noted, per accommodation tax, and the government does recognize that there is a cost to maintaining this extra population, and there is significant investment in our infrastructure as a result.
Great, thank you, I appreciate those comments. Anything further from council? Seeing none, we're gonna move on. Thank you again, Ms. McCabe. Ms. Braun, thanks for weighing in, and we're gonna go on to Revelstoke Fire Rescue. Chief DeRusi is here, and we'll be able to go through his first quarter report. Stephen, are you, are you up, up and running?
Your worship, I think the fire chief was just going to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay, all right. And so, council, you've read through the report, do you have any, any questions or comments for the fire chief regarding the first quarter? Usually, our first quarter is, is a fair amount busier, just a little bit over, I think, last year, or just under a bit, but the fact that we have the fire department here to help with everything that we need, we got away a little luckier this year, I think, with, with snow and road conditions. And, and even though it was busy on the road, we had less fatalities definitely out there, and I believe less fires this year. Any other comments or questions? Chief, anything you'd like to highlight? Okay, seeing none, thank you. We're gonna move on to Parks and Recreation, the first quarter report. Again, the report's in your package, I think we've all had a chance to go through it. And any comments or questions for Ms. Tonato? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move along. I have no other further business to go on to, so I will ask for termination of the meeting. Someone want to make that motion for me? Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counsel Charlotte, all in favor? Motion's carried, thank you, thank you, staff, thank you, council, appreciate your time today, we are now terminating the meeting. Take care, bye for now.